Hi, we're going to call to order at 6:03. All right, so let me do the roll call of attendance for commissioners. Commissioner Tejo?
Here.
Commissioner Doyle?
Here.
Commissioner Elkin?
Here.
Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Angbar?
Here.
Commissioner Goldberg?
Here.
Commissioner Green?
Here.
Commissioner Heavenridge?
Here.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Here.
Commissioner Pauls?
Here.
Commissioner Taylor?
Here.
Here as well. All right, we'll do announcements. I want to make a couple announcements before we get started. I want to remind everybody that we are in competition with the foundation and we are going to beat them again. And so what that means, besides David carrying our team as he did last year, is we need to submit our summer reading. If you're like me and you have gotten pretty lax about doing it, spend some time tonight adding what you've been reading and putting it in because we will not let the foundation win. Okay? As chair, that is my prerogative. And he will keep it. So you can just send that message to the foundation. So that's the first one. The second one is to let you all know that we are going to move number seven. Item seven, the library advisory board, Sonoma County Library Foundation, and from the library up to after number three. We have a presentation today from the Sonoma County Library Foundation, but we're moving that forward. And then finally, if you have not gotten the summer reading tee shirt, Lisa has a selection at the table, so please feel free to grab one on the way up today. Is there any other announcements?
We have an announcement. Um, I just want to remember Susan Clark, who was absolutely a committed member of the Pro We All Friends of the Library, the president of Latin, uh, who passed in June. She actually was also a library assistant and ran the middle full library when my kids went to school, the public school. So she is a longtime supporter of Quo De Libris, and she will be missed and be really appreciated by my friends and the Latin, my garden club.
Any other announcements?
Um, I just want to announce in case you haven't read the email, Padaluma Regional Library is opening August 25th. Yes, and they are closed, so the temporary library is now closed, so we don't have library service at Padaluma except for the bibliobus. Uh, but we have a ribbon cutting ceremony on the 25th. Uh, the city will also be premiering its mural at the Kennenworth Teen Center, so all are invited, please come.
I struck it the other day, excuse me.
Any other announcements? Okay. Public appearances, any members of the public for public comment? No, nobody online? Okay, all right, we're going to move seven up next, so we have a presentation today from the Sonoma County Library Foundation from Pitt. Both of us, please, from the.
Thank you, everyone, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, uh, Foundation. And welcome, uh, to you, Chair Lachos, for this meeting, and I'm excited to be at your inaugural meeting. I'm just like, this is awesome. I'll take that back. I'll also take the challenge back, uh, every, as, as Eve knows, uh, every foundation meeting, we remind our folks to read, 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 and diligent of those minutes they read. So, um, this is, uh, uh, fun for us, and some of us are reading or recording better, so I don't know. I think it's going to be close to share. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Chris Faly, I'm the president of the Sonoma County Library Foundation, and I want to thank you for your time tonight. Uh, it is our expectation, because we have a very busy year ahead of us, that we'll be here reporting out to you regularly, myself or someone else from the foundation, so. Hey, I love it when technology works. So, uh, the foundation did some work this year on our mission statement and have changed our mission. Uh, the mission of the library foundation is to empower the Sonoma County library system through financial enrichment, community connections, and library advocacy. We said this at the beginning of the year, and this is how we are prioritizing our efforts day by day in the foundation. At the start of each of our meetings, what we're trying to do is recognize and acknowledge single achievements from people in the foundation that advance one or more of these three focus areas. It has been really galvanizing for us and really, uh, gives us some direct focus. I want to talk to you a little bit about some of those. The financial enrichment, of course, this is the one you probably hear us talk about the most. It is the, uh, biggest focus right now. And this is a picture of Greg Saris, Chair of the Tribal Council of the Federated Indians of Great Inran Cherrya, the day we went to do a presentation through the tribal council. We all know the tribe gave the foundation $3.5 million specifically for construction of the Roseland Library, funds which the foundation has been stewarding since that donation. On that visit, we also wanted to celebrate the first scheduled transfer of proportion of that to the tribe of, of the tribes did, Santa Rosa. So there to receive it was the mayor of Santa Rosa, Mark Staff, with Erica and me. They raised nearly $842,000 last year. Our goal was higher for the anticipated launch, uh, that year. However, uh, we had, um, expected that we'd have some naming opportunities, which got delayed until we knew the final size of our library. So we expect to launch that this fall and close the gap from that year. Additionally, as you know, we gave $100,000 to jumpstart the Measure W campaign, which with everyone's efforts, thanks to all of you around here that did enormous amounts of work on that, uh, that was successful. And finally, all of our members, one way or another, were proud to lend our voices to the community testimony before the commission, as you ultimately voted the allocation that guarantees the model size for the new Roseland Regional Library. Here is a wonderful friend of the library foundation, philanthropist and wonderful winemaker, uh, David Stare. He chaired our effort last year to engage the wine industry in our campaign. And because of his efforts, we were able to bring in many industry leaders, including the Jackson Family Wines, who hosted the launch event at La Cremo. To date, we have raised $1.9 million, with $1.7 million to go, and we expect to reach this goal by December of 2026. I said 2025 to some group recently, so I want to make sure I said 2026. Various efforts that will bring us to our goal include the naming rights campaign, as well as various major and smaller gift appeals. This, uh, includes a Spanish language appeal to the Roseland community, guided by a committee of community leaders from that area. And finally, this is the year we're not doing one, but two first ever ticketed events. The first is right around the corner, on Sunday, September 14th, at the Wild Oak Saddle Club. Tickets are available, demand is high, and so I urge you to order soon if you would like to be there. The honorary chairs are Jeannie Schultz, Connie Cotting, and Gayla Barron. The second will be the establishment of the foundation library's first signature event, annual fundraiser. Fortunately, we have the force of nature of Daisy Damski working with us to develop this committee. Daisy is on the board of the NorCal Public Media, where she has created an annual food and wine event that's quite successful. So our community connections were really a focus we held last year. Here's Oscar Chavez, Executive Director of the Community Foundation of Sonoma County. Most of you probably recognize him. He's with Abe Jason, the architect at the Architect's Preview. Oscar has always been an enthusiastic advocate for the Roseland libraries, and always attends our events to underscore the importance to our donors, and no one ever wants to speak after Oscar. He is really, really compelling, um, and it's hard to follow him. Meanwhile, we had several different kinds of cultivation events. House parties have proven to be an excellent way for us to get up and close and personal with donors. We also have held a listening session in the Roseland branch one night specifically, because we wanted to hear from the Roseland residents and give them a chance to let us know that the interior space of the new library could reflect the heritage of their community. And more connections. So, any of you recognize this delightful picture? That's another picture of joy. I don't know what is. This is the remarkable music director of the Santa Rosa Symphony, Francesco Le Seigneur, conducting, not in Green Hall, but in our Sebastopol Library Branch. Erica has made it clear that she hopes to have a vigorous music and arts program at Roseland. And so this past year, the foundation helped fund a pilot program with the Santa Rosa Symphony. We explored this partnership that could become a cornerstone of commitment. There were performances at eight branches, and, uh, they were presented by members of the symphony's youth ensemble or quartet in the symphony. The partnership worked beautifully, so now we are moving to the next step. This year, the partnership is being expanded to thirteen, thirteen Sunday performances. The dates will include two short performances offered free within the two and a half hour period, making possible 26 performances throughout our library system. The cost of this partnership is completely underwritten by the foundation. More community connections. We include this slide for one really specific reason. I, I really want to take a minute and acknowledge the incredible role that Director Tivo has played in the foundation's fundraising efforts. In fact, her presentation at this very coveted invitational event at Wild Oak Saddle Club played an important role in how generously proactive members of that club are now working on our behalf. Time and time again, whether in front of the Church of Roses in Santa Rosa, a house party in Sebastopol, noting a major event, one-on-one visits with prospects, Erica's sincerity, vision, passion, and actually practicality win over her audience. So Erica, you are our best fundraiser, so thank you so much. I also want to just say at the Wild Oak Saddle Club, uh, when we were working with them about the event, we offered some ideas about authors to attend and all that, and they requested Erica be the keynote speaker, so that doesn't tell you something. Alrighty, honored. So advocacy was something that we sort of talked a lot about in the foundation and decided to make it part of our mission statement, because we felt like we were doing some of it, but this gave us a, a better focus. So, uh, you'll see in this, Mayor Mark Staff, who himself has become a strong advocate for Roseland. He's pictured at our Architect's Preview. You saw him earlier at the Tribal Council and at the Saddle Club event. He'll be there to introduce the keynote speaker, Erica, as I just mentioned. Meanwhile, last year, members of our foundation called in every member of the Santa Rosa City Council to rally support for the Roseland Library. Additionally, in light of the various threats to our library funding and intellectual freedoms, we are setting up an action alert network to more quickly get word out to opinion leaders and residents when the need arises. And we just committed, uh, just began a committee, and, and Pat Kudel will be the chair of that committee, uh, just started this last month. And that gets me to our board. Um, I am probably the most excited to let you know that we have, for the first time since I've been on the board, a full board of 12 board members. And it is such a critical time to have this really, really, uh, talented board. So, there, there we all are, um, full force at 12 members, and that was our goal. So we are proud not only of the diversity of heritage, but of age, and also county representation. We, we collected some data, we started then specifically trying to have people on our board that represented lots of areas of some, of our county. So the mood on this board right now is palpable. It's focused and it's energized, and very excited by the ways that we can be good partners to the commission, to Erica, the team, and help you all make us proud and the community proud of our library system. Let me see. I, it, unless there are questions, although I really should show you. This is not going forward. Yeah, it's awesome. Thank, thank you. My question's gone. So, like, wait a minute, we're not done. Yeah. So, coming soon. Uh, with the energizing strength on our board, we are looking forward to being busy and productive. We're moving forward with our own strategic plan, and we're doing it mutually with a mutually, uh, reinforcing commitment to the library's planning process, and we're working in tandem on our, uh, our strategic plan matching the libraries. We have several events coming up soon. Uh, I've spoken of the Saddle Club event with appreciation to Commissioner Paul, uh, and his close friend Congressman Lynn will say there's going to be a backyard party that plans on August 14th at 4:00 PM. We're all welcome to attend. Several of you have already RSVP'd. And then, of course, there'll be groundbreaking the second week of November. Our, our foundation is working closely with Erica and Ray Holly. We've already made recommendations to the city about how we hope to participate, so our donors are acknowledged and feel like they're an important part of all of that. So, we, I want to say, if you haven't gotten your invitation or, um, benefit to Roseland, there's invitations coming, and hopefully we'll see you there. And we would love to hear from you other ideas that you have. If you know people for house parties, we would love to be part of those as well. So, I think I want to end by thanking each one of you, what you have done for us. This picture represents one of, one of the important members of your committee, who is at the Architect's Preview, has, um, been very engaging in many of the things we've been doing, as many of you have. So thank you so much for your support, and mainly for the support you give our libraries. I'm proud to be part of Sonoma County. Best library system I've ever in, I've been to a lot of places. And really excited about Padaluma because that's my library. Can't wait to see it.
Oh, thank you.
Any, any questions or comments, Commissioner Goldberg?
Well, this is not a question, it's a comment. Um, so, I guess for a few months, I'm not sure how many, I've been the liaison from the commission to the foundation, and I am telling you, the people on that foundation board are rocking. I mean, what's harder than raising money, but they just like, go at it like, this is what we do, among other things, but I, I'm really impressed with the foundation and the people on it, and I tend to be cynical, so.
I'm highlighting.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
And we're delighted that you're a liaison. Thank you so much.
Yeah, Commissioner Doyle?
I remember long ago, um, before I was on the commission, I helped the foundation do some strategic planning and some visioning, um, long ago. And I have to say, I'm so delighted to see advocacy as part of your mission. It just, it just warms my heart, and I really appreciate it.
Very moving, even if the foundation did, so thank you.
Any other questions, comments, questions? First, thank you so much for everything you're doing, appreciate it. Okay, so I.
A member of the public is going, be a zoom, so, um, I recommend to ask for public comments again for the public appearances. And then also, just a reminder to ask for public comment for each agenda I asked. Been fine so far, so you're good, you have.
Anybody who would like to make a public comment, it's time. We'll open up public comments again. Okay, we will close all the comments and keep moving through our agenda. I really appreciate the library staff making this a nice and easy one for me for the first time. So we have no action items by resolution, item number four. We also have no presentations, item number five, so we're going to move to library reports number six and see library directors' report. Erica, did you have anything that you wanted to add to your report or highlight?
No, I. Is it on? Yeah. So I don't have much that I want to add. I do want to let you all know that, uh, we posted our, uh, our plan for our strategic plan. We received 11 proposals, so we have a lot of meeting to do. The scoring is due, uh, on Friday afternoon, so, uh, we're busy reviewing those proposals. They're, they come from the Bay Area, we have a local proposal, we have a California company, and then we have national. So it's a testament to our visibility that we are trusting proposals, um, you know, really amazing. So I'm very excited about that. I also want to thank the San Diego for their generous gift of $20,000, the performance paper of New York. That would be really, that we must, as a result, of cuts to the I N L S. And I also just want to pitch that our new subscription comes with food and games.
Oh.
So that's a very good thing.
Okay, any public comments? Any commissioner comments or questions? All right, thank you, Erica. Oh, yes, Commissioner Elkin?
Sorry, real minor question here, Erica, but I, I saw in the report that, uh, the automatic materials handling was installed in Hillsburg, it's working great. I was curious about the fact that it was ordered for Sebastopol, but there's an eight or nine month fee time. Why, why did these things take so long?
Uh, two factors were delayed. One, they say our manufacturing is failing, which is part of it, and then there's a shift here that we buy from, is American, manufacturing, and you remember. And then two, it's sheer demand. Uh, we chose the weather that's so great and so hot that there's, uh, fee time moving. I do have an update, I went there, they put this on the installation, and we don't have a specific date of, but I can tell you it's going to be installed in January.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions for Erica? Thank you. Oh, you don't have a budget and finance report? They can really be animated, y'all, thank you. Uh, so we're going to go into the consent calendar. So these matters include routine, financial, and administrative actions that may be approved by consensus. Any commission member, or member of the public, may request that an item be removed from the calendar and have it placed with the action items. The commission will approve the minutes of the prior meetings in summary format. May I have a motion in the second for the consent count?
I'd like to pull, uh, item 8.2 for discussion, please.
Okay. Can I have a?
Okay.
Okay, second, thank you. Move that down to action items. So then the item is approve the minutes of the July 2nd, 2025 regular meeting. Move to approve, thank you. Thank you. Is there any public comment? May I do the? Okay, I'm gonna do a roll call. Do a roll call on this one? Commissioner Tejo?
Yes.
Commissioner Doyle?
Yeah.
Commissioner Elkin?
Yes.
Angbar?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Heavenridge?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Pauls?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
I will abstain since I was not there. Moving into action items by motion, we'll go 9.1, reclassification of 8.5 Library Aid at Central Santa Rosa.
Uh, chairmakers, uh, we still have to, um, do the revised schedule of charges item.
So moved it.
Cause that was pulled from the consent calendar?
Do we move it to action then?
Yes.
Does it go in order then? Now it's actually become 5.3?
Generally, okay.
All right, good evening to our ladies, Commissioner Starkey Sabon, there at the Anthony Public Services Division Management. Tonight, we have a small change to the schedule of charging policy, which we're agreeing to you. We are proposing a change of consent in our page copy and printing rate for patrons. This reflects the costs that we have incurred at the library, which included paper, toner, our copier, leases and contracts, as well as our staff time in public services and behind the scene. We haven't made a change to the, uh, rate for a long time, um, but it is warranted at this time, and it allows us to continue providing a very valuable service to our community at a rate that is still at the very lowest. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Christian Pitting?
Yes. Um, yes, the reason I asked for this to be pulled, um, that's my understanding that we're doing a lot of free printing. So I don't have any problem with the, with the small increase in the charge, but I, I'd love to see a report, um, sometime soon about all the free printing that we're doing. And, um, I've also, I, I believe I just heard you say staff time involved in this. So I think that I have heard staff say they, like they're working at Kinko sometimes, that there's a, a very heavy demand for the free printing services we do. So, um, I'd be, I'd just like to see a report like that, how much we actually are charging and how much of it is actually done for free, and how many people are being served and that kind of thing.
Can you give some statistics now, if that's helpful? So, um, we do allow library cardholders up to $5 free printing allowance daily, and that's something we started in the pandemic, really out of convenience and, you know, not wanting to do a lot of, um, you know, cash handling and transactions, but we found that it really enabled people to use the library without a barrier, and it's also, uh, much more convenient and saves a lot of staff time in terms of, um, collecting the revenue, and so, um, typically, so a $5 free allowance per day, um, typical print job is only two pages. And so whether the cost of the printing is 15 cents a page or 25 cents a page is clearly under that threshold, so most of our patrons won't be affected by this change. On the other hand, um, there are people who are kind of high-volume printers and copiers at the library, and, uh, last year, IT received about $17,000 in revenue from, uh, printing and copying costs. But overall, our, our patrons are printing, um, over a million, uh, about a million pages, uh, per year. And so again, this is a, a service that you think paper has gone up.
Thank you, I was just curious about the, how much, the $5. I appreciate what the facts that you gave us, but, you know, love for detail about the.
Can you clarify which points you're looking for? Are you, you're looking for what follow-up?
Well, I mean, I don't think we're charging that many people for, for printing, if most people are falling under the free printing, are they not? So I'm just curious how many people that is, how much free printing we're doing.
We, we can, some more details in this thing for you, um, again, the, the, the whole print jobs two pages, but as we reviewed the data for the last year. Sorry.
Commissioner Elkin?
Question, comment, question, question. I just want to clarify. This change in pricing would mean that if we're continuing to offer $5 of free printing, that we would, that was, that's basically for, that's 20 pages, right, which would be free, before we would then start to charge at 25 cents a page, right? Okay, my question, comment, I've gotten unsolicited appreciation from people for the pre, the free printing at the library, including from one of my colleagues at the Rotary Club, who uses the service frequently, so I wanted to say that's great. My question, not to get too deep in the weeds here, but I was curious why you didn't raise the price for color printing?
I think many of us who grew up, uh, you know, in the last 50 years, remember that color printing used to be incredibly expensive, and, you know, please be very careful not even to print the tiniest part of your page in color, and that's just not as, there's not a big a gap anymore in the cost of black and white and color.
I'm just too old. Thank you for clarifying that. I, I'm happy to stand corrected.
You said it, she didn't.
Yeah, I, I have a question about in, in the policy, uh, in part D, where you say library director authority, I'm wondering what the authority is that you're relying on, state.
This is standard to all of our policies, and I think if you have a specific question about this, I'm sure you're able to answer that.
Um, yes, this is a standard to all of our policies. It's part of our policy template, and it really just covers minor changes, nothing substantive.
Is it in the JPA? Or do you, the commission at some point send, you know, the authority, letter of authority to, to you to do that, or to the pass?
the authority, letter of authority to to you to do that or to the pass?
Um, by approving the policy, you give me the authority to do that for this specific policy.
Making minor amendments is before mission receives policy booking, and that's what I'm wondering about, which is if the if if you're making it, going to be asking for authorization, you don't have the delegation to do it. Oh, there should be an authority granted to you someplace to do that. That's all I'm asking, is what what is that authority? That's big.
Moving this.
But it's after, it's after. So I think it would be like any other amendment to a policy.
Oh, so this is, this is new language. So the previous policy does not include this language. This is, this is new language. So if you approve this tonight, then it will be.
Yeah, so where's the authority? It says that there's an express authority. Don't see referring to authority that acts that up. It's all I'm, it's all I'm raising. If there's an authority, we should be providing somebody, a community, with a way to find that authority.
I'm I'm, I don't really understand which comment is, unless our legal counsel is um able to weigh in.
Yeah, I can, I think I understand the question. Um, hi, I'm Alec. Um, so if I'm correct, the question is when the policy says is expressly authorized, the question is where does that authority come from? Am I understanding that question correctly?
Yes.
Okay, so with, because policy updates, amendments, and new policies require board action and authorization. If the, or if the commission were to adopt the policy update, which would include this new language, that adoption is providing the authority for the library director to make minor amendments. So if adopted, that is the express authority because the authority comes from the commission's approval of adopting the amendment. It's ki- it's kind of a roundabout answer, but by adopting the amendment, that is the express authority, which is then reflected in the policy.
Thank you, Alec.
Does that answer the question?
Um, I think, yeah, I mean, it is a roundabout situation.
Right.
The commission is the agency that is granting the authority, and so it's not expressed until it's enacted, until there's something that's done. So all I'm saying is that before, when there's a discussion, changing, see, the commission has a role play in that, and that could be this meeting, or it could be a committee. But there's a role played for the commission.
Commissioner Cahill, did you have a hand up?
I agree with her, whatever lawyer says, and I suggest we should move on.
Hey, any other comments or questions about this? Commissioner Doyle?
Just coming, um, the library in my experience, and library that I have known also, um regularly update their policies, and so since this is something that has been adopted in some of our more recent policies, then this is language that that is here. And so I think that um because a lot of them are pretty standard updates, eh we're assuming that if it's a major change, then there might be some commission uh commission participation certainly, but since this is, this is a fairly um standard uh standard change, um I think that the language then is just being added as a general rule.
Okay, can I have a motion in a second?
Um, I move to approve these changes in this motion.
Second.
Public comment? Oh.
Sorry, I was just gonna ask about public comment. Thank you.
Any public comment? I see none. Commissioner Cahill?
Yes.
Commissioner Doyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Elkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Angbar?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Heavenridge?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Poles?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
And I'll make it unanimous. Thank you. Okay, moving on to action items. Nine point one, reclassification of a point five library aid at Central Santa Rosa Library to a point three seven five FTE shelter and a point two five FTE library specialist.
Okay. So we certainly had a vacancy of an aid position at the Central Santa Rosa Library, and in accordance with operational need, um alignment with our staffing study and with support from our union, we're recommending that the position be replaced by creating a new part-time shelter position and increasing the FTE of a library specialist by an hour so week, and that will be the uh basically the the work that the library aid did. Are there any questions or details of senior?
Any questions? No. Hey, can I have a motion in a second?
I move.
Okay, I'm second. Any public comment? Nope. Okay. Commissioner Cahill?
Yes.
Commissioner Doyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Elkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Angbar?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Heavenridge?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie? Commissioner Poles?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
I'll make it unanimous. Hey, action item nine point two, building forward together grant funding agreement between the city of Roner Park and the San Antonio County Library. Eric, Director DeBos.
Okay, so this is for the building forward together grant uh with the city of Roner Park. This is an MOU that establishes the role responsibilities of both the library and the city of Roner Park. This project will be managed by the city of Roner Park, and so the MOU really details the payment structure, which includes uh fifty percent of payment of our share of the matching portion upon final approval of this agreement or upon the city's execution of the design, holding contract, whichever occurred first, and the remaining fifty percent on full execution of the project's construction contract.
Any questions or comment? Commissioner Goldberg?
I didn't understand one thing on it, which is, okay. Um. So in background information, we're, the second paragraph, it requires a seventy five percent match in funds, blah, 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 and the library is going to pay fifty percent of the match in funds. Where does the other twenty five percent come from?
So when the city of Roner Park received a grant from the state library, um the the you can use grant for one to one match, so the state library, let's say, for example, gave a million dollars, and the city would have to provide a million dollar matching fund. Uh, during this round, the city of Roner Park qualified for a waiver, so they didn't have to provide a one to one match. They only had to provide the seventy five percent match, and then we are splitting the match. So uh of the seventy five percent that is equal to eight hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars roughly, the city of Roner Park is paying half of that, and we are paying half of that. Thanks.
Just a a comment. Uh, first of all, I'm glad to see the library making this investment to help out our JPA partner here, and I hesitate to say this with two lawyers on the commission, but as a non-lawyer, I appreciate it from very clear and straightforward agreement, seems very fair, and feel very comfortable authorizing, so thank you for working.
Anything else? Anyone else? Okay, any public comment? I see none. I'm gonna check in a second. Second, thank you, thank you. Any other discussion? Hey, Commissioner Cahill?
Yes.
Commissioner Doyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Elkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Angbar?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Heavenridge?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Poles?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
And I'll make it unanimous. All right. Item ten, discussion. We don't have anything scheduled, so we're gonna move into closed session now, so if I can invite our audience to, I would appreciate it. Okay, are we back? You're back. Thank you so much. Okay, so there is no action that was taken in closed session. So we are going to move on to item number thirteen, commission and liaison reports. Uh, past hair reports?
There actually is one thing that I, uh, I suppose I could have done this in announcement, but, um, but last Friday, uh, the Senate appropriation, this is at the national level. And so this is about the Institute of Museum and Library Services funding, which is incredibly important as it filters down. Um, and so the Senate appropriations committee locked up a spending bill, and it includes funding for library. The LSTA, which is the Library Services and Technology Act program, got a small increase in the bill. Um, it was increased to two hundred and fourteen million dollars, and that's a three million dollar increase, and it's all for the grants to state. So California gets the biggest grant to states as it gets distributed. So, um, and then the, uh, and then the approach to literacy, which is specifically funding for schools and school libraries. Um, the Senate decided that they wanted, um, half, at least half of that money to go directly to schools, not, say, to organizations that may be doing things at school. So, um, so the the, um, the Washington Office of the American Library Association is very pleased about that. So the deal is, um, and I can give, I can, I can pass out additional details about this, um, um, and send you, and send you an email with a specific, but I just want to let you know that, that that's good. But what we need to do is talk to our senators. This is a break. So if you see the senators, if you see your congresspersons, talk to them, talk to Huckman, talk to everybody, um, because after the Senate, then it goes to the House, and you know, who knows what's happening in the House. But, um, so this is very important news, and that's all, that's the only addition I'd like to make up.
So I, I didn't catch all that. My MLS is gone, but there's this additional funding.
Gone yet.
Okay, I thought it was out of the.
They're trying to, there's still a lot that's going on.
Oh, lawsuits?
Lots of.
Oh, lawsuits.
Yeah, and executive orders are, um, are taking a lot of slack, but, but if the Senate, if Congress is still funding, then it's not divvied out. So, and if it, and if they there's some talk about the grants to states, there's some talk about putting them, you know, if they don't give it to the Department of Education, then they could give it to labor, they could, but if Congress, um, approves the funding, then an executive order can't really take well, who knows whether it can take it away or not, but, um, we can hope that an executive order won't take it away. They can. That's right.
We're wrong.
Um, two questions. Follow-up for Paul's question. So I thought they had stopped the funding, but we're going to maybe get it back. You're saying actually the funding, despite the executive order, it's just kept flowing?
This is for next year.
Or for next year?
Yeah, this is for, this is for next year. And so they, they, they forced, they forced the INLS to give funding to the states, um, which they're spending. The problem, uh, the, the question that, that is on everybody's mind is, will the INLS, will the department itself disappear? And so that is under, there are lots of, there are lawsuits about that, and.
And then my other question is, I could look it up online, but I didn't. Um, why was the librarian of Congress fired?
I'm sorry.
Why was the librarian of Congress fired?
Um, well, uh, I think they were looking for a reason to do it, um, but I could say that it's because she's black, because she's a woman, because she, uh, believes in freedom of information and, uh, um, intellectual freedom. Uh, I can say that it's because this administration thinks that they need to replace all of the departments with someone who thinks the way they do. Um, she has landed at a foundation, and, uh, and her voice is not going to be silent. She was in the American Library Association. And, um, and she's an incredible speaker. She ran the, um, Baltimore Public Library for years, and, uh, she just, she's a terrific, a terrific woman. Um, so she's going to be part of the library community, but um, it's, uh, who knows what they're doing in Washington? Yes.
Thank you. Hey, Commissioner reports. Anything to add? Commissioner Kinney?
I would just like to point out a very cute photo in my report.
Cute photo. You can show yourself.
This little guy, this was absolutely adorable. He came to our lap table, the, uh, farmer's market, and he begged us for a bag. You're supposed to use spinning wheel.
Oh.
But he wanted a bag, so of course we gave him one. And his mom stepped up and she said, he wants to be a librarian, and he wants you to know that he wants to be a librarian. So anyway, I, I put that in my Facebook page, but I didn't put it under the picture there. But anyway, it's a doll. Yeah, anyway, it was so cute. That's all.
The little guy with the bag?
Mm-hmm. He already knows he wants to be a librarian. He's about five.
Good girl. Anyone else? Commissioner, Commissioner Anger?
In my, in my report, there's a reference to, um, city council actions that just, um, include these stats to support the concept of developing the Sabatos, Sabastical Commons, which would include, uh, among other things, would include space for library. And space that it has now. It took, uh, two years and, um, three meetings to finally get it, uh, over the line, but the city did approve it, and they're now in the process of pointing people to committee. And then the committee will start, start working, and it's going to be a standing committee. So it's no longer category at all. That's a little bit information people want, information about the concept of the commons or the community development model that we're using for, uh, developing that space and what we're doing. I'm happy to provide it. Either Rodney would collect that and do a presentation, I think Stephen Solan, the mayor, and Sarah Gertie, the representatives of the measure, why could you have have them come to make the presentations? If you're interested.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Commissioner Doyle?
Just a quick. Are the, is the standing committee, is, are those meetings going to be open?
Oh, yeah. Meeting after. Certainly. Now, the the committee is going to have two city council members on, and a number of other folks. So it's, they're wrestling right now with the city council about how they want set it up.
Thanks. Great. Thank you.
There are no objections to it.
Okay. Okay, we don't have a finance committee report this month. So Commissioner Goldberg, anything to add to your historic records commission meeting? Do you have anything to add to your foundation needs on the board? Okey-doke. Any questions for Commissioner Goldberg? Yes, Commissioner Kinney?
Oh, I just was wondering, uh, under the, uh, historical records, what's the restrictive covenant modification program that's had six million documents reviewed so far?
Oh. Well, can't give you a really detailed explanation, but it has to do with, so you know what restrictive covenants were? It was thing like in certain neighborhoods, it's in the past, uh, you could only s- it was racial discrimination on who could buy in certain neighborhoods. And this modification, they want to get rid of restrictive covenants in all the records on the one hand, because it's disgusting, and they don't exist anymore, but there's all these properties that still have it attached, even though it's illegal. At the same time, they want to preserve the historical record of what there was, so it doesn't get wiped out from our history. So it's a pretty complicated process of going through all these documents, a lot of handwritten stuff, a lot of technology to turn it into what, so that on a certain set of documents, the restrictive covenants disappear, and on other archived documents, it's still there for history to understand. Does that make sense? Okay. It's complicated, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Goldberg. Okay. We have no old and new business. Any agenda items for future commission meetings?
Well, I would like a presentation at some point of what Fred was talking about, about this Sabastical Commons. It doesn't sound like we're quite ready to give it yet, but uh, I'd like to have it sometime.
If the commission wants them, or would be out of place, or should be jailed by September.
I see. Thanks.
And then any.
Commissioner Kinney?
Yes, I know. Sorry, in minutes from the last time that it says at this meeting, we were going to talk about climate change, sustainability, and how library commissioners can access legal advice or legal opinions. And so I just request that get carried forward, since we didn't do it.
We got a, um,
we.
We got a memo about the, the legal.
Yeah, did you see the email? Mm-hmm. Okay. We'll make sure that we send it then again, to make sure you have it. So there was the follow-up on the legal that was in the email, and then the other two items.
So the sustainability report is not ready. Um, lots of people are on vacation over the summer, so the plan is to take it to the September meeting. And Jalen and I are going to be actually reviewing the staff, uh, report tomorrow.
I'm not concerned. I just thought I'd point it out, because it says in the minutes that we just proved that.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. Anybody else? Okay, date and time of the next meeting, Wednesday, September third, six o'clock, Rona Park, Catato Regional Library. So I think we're done. Yep. Done.
Well, done.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.